The numbers of registered voters in the hall, according to Precinct One, we have thirty-two. Precinct Two, we had forty-one. Precinct Three, we had thirty-four. Precinct Four, we had thirty-five. For a total of one hundred and fifty-nine voters in the hall. It being the hour of seven sixteen, I'd like to declare the special town meeting of June ninth, two thousand and fourteen, to order. This time, I would like to ask for you all to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. It is my honor tonight, we did invite members of Sergeant Vasiliyan's family to be here tonight to lead the Pledge of Allegiance. They had a family gathering tonight, and due to the conflict, the Vasiliyan family has asked, and Shane has graciously agreed, Shane Crowley, who was a close friend of Sergeant Vasiliyan, will be here to represent the Vasiliyan family and lead us in tonight's Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Crowley.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a brief reading, the Selectmen did issue the special town meeting warrant. It was posted according to the town's bylaws, and notices of the posting of the warrant were also delivered to all the resident voters according to the town bylaws. The Selectmen have also signed the warrant. The warrant called for the meeting to start in New Orleans, seven o'clock, and as we said, seven sixteen, the hour has come. And now that there is a quorum, we're going to move right into the four articles on the special town meeting warrant. We'll close the special town meeting, and then we will open the annual town meeting, as long as the hour of seven thirty has passed, because that is the posted time for the annual town meeting. And at that point in time, we'll go over the more specific rules and regulations, introduce the Finance Committee, and have a brief, some mentions from our Board of Selectmen Chairperson, Mr. Ken Coyle. So if you would all direct your attention to the yellow handout with our four articles for the special town meeting warrant, we'll go one at a time, and I would like to invite the new Chairman of the Finance Committee, Mr. Chad Lovett, to the microphone. We'll begin with Article One, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds to supplement specific budget line items appropriate under Article One of the two thousand and thirteen annual town meeting, or otherwise amend the vote. All is recommended by the town manager as listed on the document entitled, "The FY two thousand and fourteen Recommended Light Item Transfers." And those light item transfers are what is listed on the back of the yellow sheet. I think one vote will authorize all of those transfers. The motion from the Finance Committee by Mr. Lovett.
Finance Committee moves to approve fiscal year two thousand and fourteen line item transfers as printed on the document entitled, "FY two thousand and fourteen Recommended Line Item Transfers."
Finance Committee makes a motion to approve the line item transfers as they are laid out to you in the yellow handout. Is there anything to be heard on the motion to approve Article One? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed say no. It's unanimous. We move to Article Two, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds, the amount of five thousand dollars to contract for professional administrative services in connection with the two thousand and fourteen Charter Review Committee, or to take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Lovett.
The Finance Committee moves to approve the article.
Thank you.
The Finance Committee moves to approve the article with the funds to be transferred from the FY two thousand and fourteen health insurance line item.
Finance Committee makes a motion to approve the article with the transfer of the five thousand from the FY two thousand and fourteen health insurance line item. Is there any questions or anything to be heard on Article Two of the special town meeting? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed say no. The ayes have it. It's unanimous. Article Three will be a vote to transfer from available funds the sum of nine thousand dollars to contract for professional services, to research or construct a wage and classification plan for managerial and supervisory positions, or to take any other actions relative thereto. Mr. Lovett.
The Finance Committee moves to approve the article with the funds to be transferred from the FY two thousand and fourteen health insurance line item.
Finance Committee makes a motion to approve the article with the transfer from the health insurance line item. Is there anything to be heard on Article Three? If not, all those in favor approving Article Three in the Finance Committee's motion, please signify by saying aye. All opposed say no. It is unanimous. Article Four, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds sums of money for the purpose of funding and implementing the cost items of the first year of collective bargaining agreements, if any, between the town and the following units: clerical unit, the highway park and sewer units, the Abington Managers Association, and the IBPO or the Police Union, or to take any other action relative thereto. Chad.
The Finance Committee moves to approve the collective bargaining agreements with the clerical and highway park sewer units as follows: Transfer six thousand, six hundred and eighty-six dollars and twenty-seven cents from the FY two thousand and fourteen highway salaries line item and two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars and sixty-two cents from the sewer undesignated fund balance, to fund the cost items in the FY two thousand and twelve through FY two thousand and fifteen, AFS CME Council ninety-three local seventeen, one thousand seven hundred highway park sewer collective bargaining agreement, and to transfer nine thousand, one hundred and sixty-one dollars and fifty-four cents from the FY two thousand and fourteen highway salary line item, and one thousand, eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars and seven cents from the sewer undesignated fund balance, to fund the cost items in the FY two thousand and eleven through FY two thousand and fourteen, AFL CIO Public Employees Local Union eleven thirty-nine clerical employees collective bargaining agreement, and nine thousand, one hundred and sixty-one dollars and fifty-four cents from the FY, from the FY two thousand and fourteen South Shore Vocational Technical School line item, to fund the subsequent FY two thousand and fifteen obligation.
Thank you, Mr. Lovett. So the motion from the Finance Committee is to approve the collecting, collective bargaining agreements with the clerical union and with the highway park and sewer union, and the amounts transferred were listed with six thousand, six hundred and eighty-six point twenty-seven, two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five point sixty-two for the highway park and sewer, and then the transfer nine thousand, one sixty-one point fifty-four, one thousand, eight ninety-nine point oh-seven, and nine thousand, one sixty-one point fifty-four for the clerical employees. I'm reading that correctly. Is there anything to be heard? Any questions on Article Four to fund those contracts? If you have a question, please go to the microphone, and for all any questions, if you could please state your name and your address, so the town clerk can record it for the record. Thank you. Oh, sorry, we have to turn that microphone on. Switch right on the top. There you go.
My name's Martha Kraft. I live at one seventy-five Damon Road, and I'm sorry, but that was way too fast. We didn't have it in writing ahead of time. We should have. I'd like it repeated slow enough so we can record it on our papers. Thank you.
Certainly, and we apologize for that, but as I understand it, these contracts were just finalized within the last forty-eight hours or so. And never again, to respond to that, let me do that, if you don't mind. So the motion from the Finance Committee is to approve the collective bargaining agreements with the clerical and highway park sewer units as follows: To transfer a six thousand, six eighty-six point twenty-seven from the FY two thousand and fourteen highway salaries line item, and two thousand, nine twenty-five point sixty-two from the sewer undesignated fund balance, to fund the cost items in the FY two thousand and twelve to FY two thousand and fifteen, AFS CME Council ninety-three local nineteen hundred, or the highway park and sewer collective bargaining agreement. That's Part One, or Part A. Part B, regarding the clerical employees' contract, is to transfer nine thousand, one sixty-one point fifty-four from the FY two thousand and fourteen highway salaries line item, and one thousand, eight ninety-nine point oh-seven from sewer undesignated fund balance, to fund the cost items for the FY two thousand and eleven to the FY two thousand and fourteen AFL CIO Public Employees Local Union eleven thirty-nine, or the clerical employees' union, their collective bargaining agreement, and further, nine thousand, one sixty-one point fifty-four from the FY two thousand and fourteen South Shore Vocational Technical School line item, to fund the subsequent FY two thousand and fifteen obligation. It's a lot of information, but I'm told the numbers jive. Yes, sir?
James Frainy, nine thirty-one Washington Street. I think we're all familiar with most of these organizations, but that Abington Managers Association is a new one to me. Could someone please explain what that is and what its function is?
We can do that briefly. That's not actually being approved. The contract's not being approved tonight, but if, Mr. LaFawn, would like to speak and describe what that union is.
Two of the groups that are on the warrant are not being asked for funding, as the moderator pointed out. The motion is only to fund the clerical and the highway department's contracts, but the management union was formed, I believe, about eighteen months ago by the professional staff of town, the town hall and other departments. Currently, there is no contract that's in place with those, with that union. That includes positions such as a sewer superintendent, highway superintendent, as an example. So it's a management-level union. But once again, we're not, no one's being asked to fund any contract with that group tonight.
No, I understand that. I, so this is another collective bargaining unit?
Correct.
It seems like these are what used to be called confidential employees. Is there a difference?
Well, they're confidential to an extent. I think the confidentiality threshold, and I would certainly defer to Town Council if he thinks I'm off-base here, refers specifically to having information or involvement in the collective bargaining process. For instance, and I'm going to pick on the sewer superintendent again, because he's over there, is, he, by his position, does not participate in collective bargaining with other groups. He doesn't, you know, run any numbers, doesn't advise the town manager or the Board of Selectmen with regard to bargaining with other groups. So the issue of confidentiality, for this purpose, really reflects only their knowledge and involvement in the collective bargaining process, not whether or not they have confidential information. For instance, there are employees in both groups that we mentioned tonight, particularly the clerical group, who deal with a lot of private information, whether they be social security numbers, or health insurance information, et cetera. So we have to be, draw the line between what confidentiality means for the purposes of collective bargaining.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frainy. Are there any other questions or anything to be heard on Article Four of the special town meeting regarding the funding of two of the union contracts? If not, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of approving the Finance Committee's motion, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Thank you. And that ends the four articles on the special town meeting warrant. I will declare the special town meeting of two thousand and nine, of June ninth, two thousand and fourteen, to be adjourned at seven twenty-eight. We do have an annual town meeting to start, but I can't do that until the seven thirty. So, much dear chagrin, I do have a couple of public announcements. The Abbott and Police Department would like you all to know that the, they have an ongoing food drive to support the Abbott and Food Pantry, which is a great worthwhile cause. This food drive is running throughout, now till the, till June twenty-third, I should say. If you have any non-perishable items that you'd like to donate to the food pantry, you can drop them off anytime, day or night, at the Abbott and Police Station at two fifteen Central Street. Also, I was asked to announce that the Abbott and Summer Concerts would like to thank all the many business owners, organizations, and residents who made donations to this year's summer concerts. This will be the tenth summer of free concerts at the Catherine and Joseph Nisby Bandstand, which are held six p.m. on Sunday evenings. This year's schedule features several not-to-be-missed performances that will help celebrate the tenth season. Be sure to take home a copy of the two thousand and fourteen schedule. They may be found in the lobby of the Town Hall and at the Public Library if you did not receive one tonight. The first concert will be on June twenty-ninth with Dalton and the Sheriffs, which is sponsored by Abbott and Firefighters Local Two-O-eight-O. Sincerely, the Concert Organizing Committee, Ken Coyle, Peter McDonald, Jan Prowl, and Nancy Reed, thank that group for all the work they do. Also, pursuant to our town charter, the moderator is required to appoint a Charter Review Committee every ten years, or in every year ending in four, and that committee is intended to meet, review the current charter, draft any suggested amendments, and report at the next year's annual town meeting, which would be in two thousand and fifteen. I'm pleased and proud that we did have a number of residents who volunteered for those services, and I have notified and appointed the following five residents to serve as our Charter Review Committee: Mr. Robert Wing, Sharon Hill, Paul Donlin, Mr. Andrew Burbine, and Mr. John Buckley. If any resident has any suggestions, comments, criticisms, or proposed amendments for the charter, I'd ask you to please get in touch with any one of those five people, or you can certainly get in touch with them through the Town Manager's Office at Town Hall. If I overlooked any other announcements, I apologize. I'm sure someone will correct me later. The hour being seven thirty, I would note that the warrant, again, for the annual town meeting has been posted and issued by the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Abington, to hold a, to hold an annual town meeting in Precinct Five of Abington on Monday, the ninth of June, at seven thirty in the evening, to act on the following articles, of which there are twenty-six articles. At this time, since we've already had the Pledge of Allegiance, I would like to recognize the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, and I would all ask you to please rise, as we would like Mr. Ken Coyle to read a list of the deceased. Before we do, I'm going to just confirm once again that we do have a quorum of one hundred and fifty-nine plus in the House, so we can open the annual town meeting. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Coyle.
After reading this list, if you will join me in a moment of silence, in memory, passed away in two thousand and thirteen, Joseph D. Carlon Tony, Mark S. Chorokas, Grace Damon, Mary Donlin, Leslie C. Greenleaf, Mary Margaret Frainy, William R. Hamilton, Thomas McGyseck, Bruce Waugh, Eileen Margaret, Margaret A. Delaney, Eleanor Popponi, and although not technically a town official, just as deserving Sergeant Daniel Vasiliyan, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you.
Please be seated. Mr. Coyle.
On behalf of the Board of Selectmen, and on behalf of the town, I would like to present to the Vasiliyan family, who was not present, but to Shane Crowley, if I could, a copy of the town report. This year's town report is dedicated to Marine Sergeant Daniel M. Vasiliyan, who was killed in action in Afghanistan on December twenty-third, two thousand and thirteen. Marine Sergeant Vasiliyan was twenty-seven years old and serving his third tour of duty in service to his country. Marine Sergeant Vasiliyan was a graduate from Abington High School and joined the Marines in two thousand and oh-six. He had enlisted for a second four-year tour. He has left behind his wife, Erin, his parents, Mark A. Vasiliyan and Karen Vasiliyan. He also leaves behind his siblings, Janine, Julianne, and Joseph, his grandparents, Gene Vasiliyan and the late Robert G. Vasiliyan, Thomas P. Connor, and the late Beverly Abbott. He will be dearly missed by David and Patricia Doyle, his in-laws, and his niece and nephew, Caleb and Shaylen Berrio. He left a town in mourning. Marine Sergeant Daniel M. Vasiliyan, Danny, will be remembered for his courage, his bravery, his laughter, and love of life. This year's town report is dedicated to a soldier who has dedicated his life in service to his country. Semper Fi. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coyle. Thank you, Mr. Crowley. And on behalf of the Vasiliyan and Doyle families, they did ask me to extend their thanks and appreciation to the outpouring of support that was shown when Sergeant Vasiliyan was brought home to Abington, and for the many weeks that have occurred since then. The support of this town has been impressive, to say the least, and they very, very much appreciate it. Thank you. We will now proceed with the opening of the annual town meeting. I see some new faces in here, and we welcome you. For those of you who don't know me, I am Sean Riley. I'm the town moderator. It is my responsibility to preside over and regulate the discussion of tonight's articles, which appear on the warrant before you. The warrants were prepared and approved by the Board of Selectmen, and as you, again, entered, you should have picked up the stapled white, let's see, it's about, oh, how many pages we have? Twenty-two pages plus two pages of budget information at the end of that. We will be following that document for the remainder of tonight's meeting. For those of you attending your first town meeting, we're very happy that you've taken the time to be in attendance and take part in your democracy. For those of you who regularly attend town meetings, we greatly appreciate your continued dedication to the well-being of our town. We'll do the best to move things along tonight, while also providing reasonable time for open debate and to answer any questions. Please allow me to introduce our town clerk, Leanne Adams, who sits to my left, and our Town Council, Mr. Jim Fair, to my far left, from Colton Men Page, and of course, Mr. Rick LaFawn, our Town Manager. I'm sorry, Joe Fair. Jim's a friend of mine from college. I do, Joe Fair. Attorney Fair will be here to answer any legal questions which may arise, and together with the town clerk, they will help try to make us run this meeting as smoothly as possible. Seated to my right are the members of the Abbott and Finance Committee. The Finance Committee is comprised of residents of Abington who volunteer to review and analyze each article, which is voted on here at each town meeting. At the start of this meeting, I will ask the Chairperson of the Finance Committee to introduce each member, and you will also make some introductory remarks to summarize the budget issues which will be presented this evening. Some general rules, for those of you new to town meeting. Please raise your hand if you'd like to speak, and the moderator will recognize you at my earliest available moment and ask you to stand and speak, but please use one of the microphones, either in the middle of the floor, or you can always come up to the front if you prefer. Please give your name and address before you speak, so the town clerk can properly record the minutes of the meeting. Please make sure to keep all comments and questions relevant to the subject matter of the article being discussed. Do not make any personal attacks or bring personalities into debating any issue. If the moderator believes that the speaker is straying from the issues, I will have to direct the speaker to limit his portion, his or her portion of the debate, to the issue. We also ask that all speakers limit their time at the microphone, so that others will have an opportunity to speak and be heard. A motion to move the question will be taken up as any other motion. For those of you who are new and want to know what a move the question motion is, it's a request to end the debate on that article and to move directly to a vote on the article. However, to move the question, a person must be recognized by the moderator, and the motion to move the question must be then immediately mentioned. You cannot take the microphone, recite your opinion about an article, and then try to shut off everyone else's debate by then moving the question at the conclusion of your comments. Please all also understand that the moderator has a right to rule that a motion to move the question is out of order. If I believe that the motion is unfairly or prematurely limiting the voter's rights to hear answers to questions, would have better understand an article or an amendment. Only registered voters may vote here at the town meeting. Any non-resident or non-registered voter is required to sit in the bleachers sections behind the check-in areas, in the back right corner or the back left-hand corner. Department heads and members of the press are allowed to sit to my far left. Any person who's not a resident but wishes to address the meeting must first be recognized by the moderator and have an approval of a majority vote of the members of town meeting. In accordance with our town charter, non-resident department heads and superintendents who work for our town are allowed to speak and answer questions if requested. They may also sit and consult with their, with their relevant committee or board in the audience. We will strive to end the town meeting at a reasonable hour. If for some reason we do not finish all of the twenty-six articles tonight, we will continue till Wednesday, forty-eight hours from now, but we will do our best to finish everything tonight. In case there are any standing counts, I need to appoint four tellers. I've appointed Mr. Leo Donovan, who will count all the votes to the bleachers in, on my left, where he's sitting. Mr. Paul Malika, who will count all the votes to the section of chairs to my left, where you are sitting. Mr. David Drew, who will count this section of chairs where you're sitting, and you will also count the votes of the Finance Committee, and Mr. Russ Esau, who will count all the votes in the bleacher section to my right. I also need to appoint a deputy moderator at the beginning of each annual town meeting. I ask that you therefore approve the appointment of Mr. Robert J. Kelly, Jr., as a deputy moderator. All those in favor of appointing Mr. Bob Kelly as deputy moderator, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed say no. Thank you. It's not unanimous, but he does get the approval. Because Mr. Kelly is not present tonight, I do need to appoint an assistant moderator for tonight's meeting. So Mr. Dennis Bergen has agreed to serve in that capacity tonight. Therefore, I must ask for your vote to approve and appoint Mr. Bergen as an assistant town moderator for tonight's session of town meeting. All those in favor of approving Mr. Dennis Bergen as an assistant moderator, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed say no. That's unanimous. All right. I'd also like to thank and welcome Senator John Keenan, who is here at our town meeting. We appreciate, John, the services you do for us at Beacon Hill. Understanding that many of you have babysitters at home, we ask you to turn down your cell phone ringers. If you have any telephone conversations, we ask you, please, take it out to the lobby, so you don't disturb those around you. Please understand, in order to debate or discuss an item at tonight's meeting, the subject matter must be in the warrant, in the form of an article. Tonight, the Finance Committee and others will be resenting their motions to either approve an article as is originally printed, or to propose amended wording with updated information, or to oppose an article, which we call passing over an article. If you have any questions about procedures or how to do something, please feel free to ask me. I'm told Representative Jeff Deal is also here. Wonderful. Jeff, thank you, again, there is Jeff. Thank you for being here. If there aren't any questions with procedures, I'd like to proceed right away with Article One. Mr. Lovett, you want to take the microphone? Article One is to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds, the supplemental specific budget light items appropriate under Article, I'm sorry, I'm reading off the specials. Article One is to see if the town will vote to transfer from the water undesignated fund balance, the sum of one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and twenty-one dollars and two cents from Water Conservation Account, the sum of twenty-four thousand, one hundred and twelve point oh-nine from the Abbott and its portion of the pension costs assessed to the Town of Rockland by the Plymouth County Retirement in fiscal year two thousand and ten, and fiscal year two thousand and nine, respectively, or take any other action by the Water Commissioners. Mr. Lovett.
Sean, do you want me to read my one?
We'll do that. Article Three. Thank you. The Finance Committee moves to pass over Article One. Finance Committee moves to pass over Article One. Is there anything to be heard on Article One? If not, your vote would be to pass over Article One. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Article One is passed over. Article Two, to see if the town will vote to transfer from water undesignated fund balance, the sum of seven thousand, six thirty-six point fourteen, for sick leave buyback for a retired employee of the Water Department. Mr. Lovett.
The Finance Committee moves that the town transfer from the FY two thousand and fourteen water expense line, the sum of seven thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars and fourteen cents, for sick leave buyback for a retired Water Department Abington employee. Said sum to be paid to Rockland.
Finance Committee moves that the town transfer from FY two thousand and fourteen water expense, seven thousand, six thirty-six fourteen, for the sick leave buyback. Is there anything to be heard on the Finance Committee's motion to approve Article Two? If not, all those in favor of approving Article Two, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed say no. The ayes have it. It's unanimous. Article Three is the approval of basically the budget for next year's town services. Before we go into the motion for Article Three, I would like to give the floor to the Finance Committee Chairman, Mr. Chad Lovett, and ask him to also introduce his committee members, and give a brief summary of tonight's meeting.
How brief do you want?
As far as you want to go.
Hi, everybody. Hopefully you can hear me now. Thank you for taking the time out of your evening to attend tonight's town meeting. Tonight, we'll be asking you to approve the town's budget for fiscal year two thousand and fifteen. In addition to the budget, there are questions to allow the town to do some housekeeping, a question regarding the Community Preservation Act, bylaw amendments, and an approval to purchase a new piece of firefighting equipment. Before we get into the excitement of the articles, I'd like to thank the town finance team, including Town Manager Rick LaFawn, Assistant Town Manager Jory Jamison, Town Accountant Sue Mokun, Deputy Assessor Jack Pistorino, and Treasurer Collector Leo Provost. In addition, I'd like to thank the town department heads, the school department, and the Board of Selectmen. Finally, I'd like to thank the Finance Committee members to my right: Rick Franny, Stephanie Eastwick, Barbara Christophero, Liggy Suzadellis, Matt Sala, Cindy Whiting, Sean Tyler, and our Recording Secretary Deb Libby. The budget, the budget that you'll vote on tonight was started early this year under the leadership of the Town Manager. The Town Manager worked with the department heads to come up with a budget labeled FY two thousand and fifteen Department Requested Budget. The town's finance team, along with input from the Finance Committee, worked to come up with the revised budget labeled both FY two thousand and fifteen Town Manager Recommended and FY two thousand and fifteen Finance Committee Recommended. The budget that's on tonight's handout does utilize two hundred and forty thousand dollars from the town's stabilization or rainy day fund. This is a fifty-six percent decrease from last year's use of stabilization funds, and will allow the town to continue to provide level service for the upcoming year. The expectation of the Finance Committee is that the town will replenish the used stabilization funds when free cash is moved at the fall town meeting. If the stabilization funds are not used, the budget would be short, two hundred and forty thousand dollars, and require that services and positions be reduced to close that gap. The Finance Committee does not take it lightly to utilize stabilization funds, but we believe that this reduction from last year's use of stabilization shows marked improvements in the town's financial situation. For the remaining articles, the Finance Committee will make its recommendation to you as we proceed through tonight's warrant. Our recommendations are based on several weeks of open, frank, and informative discussions among the volunteers who serve on our Finance Committee, our town's professional finance team, and the various department heads who helped to explain the purpose of each article, and how our money could best be invested in the town's services for the upcoming fiscal year, which starts July first. Again, I'd like to thank all the volunteers, the town employees, for their time, their patience, their hard work, and their dedication to our town. And we in turn would like to thank you, the residents, who have chosen to attend and cast your votes at tonight and future town meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lovett. Well done for your first town meeting. So we'll proceed to Article Three, to see if the town will vote to raise inappropriate transfer from available funds and appropriate from department receipts such sums as are necessary to free salaries and expenses of the town for fiscal year two thousand and fifteen, all is set forth in a detailed budget handout or take any other action. I direct your attention to the handout, again, the white-colored handout, the stapled handout that you picked up at the back of the room. The last two pages are the budget information, which we will be asking for your approval. Essentially, the far-right-hand column, which says FY two thousand and fifteen Finance Committee Recommended, will be the numbers that you will be asked to approve for the FY fifteen budget, which will take effect as of July first, two thousand and fifteen. There is a rather long motion typed in the handout, but there is an abbreviated motion that Town Council has drafted, which Mr. Lovett will now read into the record before we begin any discussion about the budgets. Mr. Lovett.
The Finance Committee moves that the town approve the FY two thousand and fifteen budget as printed in the attached document entitled Article Three, FY two thousand and fifteen Proposed Budget, and as funding, therefore, to appropriate from the funding sources and in the specified amounts as printed in the attached document under Article Three, under the title Complete Motion under Article Three.
Thank you, Mr. Lovett. Finance Committee recommends a motion, a motion, recommends approval of the FY two thousand and fifteen budget as is presented to you in the handout, the three-page handout, and as further described in the complete motion, which is printed in the handout on page two. What I'd like to do is just ask first, we'll go page by page of the three pages, if there are any questions on any of the line items on the first page, which starts at the top with town meeting salaries, and runs down to the end on the bottom, which says total gas. Any questions on any of the line items on page one? If not, we'll turn the page to page two. Page two starts at the top with total plumbing, and ends at the bottom with liability insurance, with the total general budget figures of forty-two million, oh thirty-six, eight fifty-six. Are there any questions with any of the line items on page two? If not, we'll proceed to review page three, which show the If not, we'll proceed to review page three, which show the special revenue funds where money is being appropriated and budgeted for the upcoming fiscal year. Is there any questions with any of the information on page three? If not—I hope that means that they've been watching you on TV and have answered a lot of your questions already. If not—do you have a question, sir? Mr. Lee, if you could approach the microphone? And again, even if you think I know your name, if you could state your name and address, it would be most appreciated.
David Lee, 127 Oak Street. I have a question under Veterans Services. We don't have a veteran vet agent in this town. How can they appropriate our salary where we don't have anyone?
Mr. LaFond, moderator recognizes the town manager, Richard LaFond.
Through you, Mr. Moderator, be aware—I think most people may be—that the Selectmen in both the towns of Abington and Whitman have asked, requested that the state approve a veterans' district, and the state has approved that. The town is in the process now of advertiser—well, the town, both towns are in the process of advertising for a full-time director. That would also be complemented by a part-time veterans' agent and possible clerical support on top of that. There will be funds necessary in the budget to fund Abington's portion of that, and that's what's reflected in the budget in front of you tonight.
Thank you, Mr. LaFond.
I went to the meeting last month, the Selectmen's meeting, and they did promise as a vet agent by the 1st of July. Is that true?
Well, the district has been approved effective July 1. We hope to have a director in place on or about July 1. The process for advertising is underway really actually this week, so it could take more than a couple of weeks to get that person in place. It probably will, but it's certainly our goal.
I hope so.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Thank you, Mr. LaFond. Any other questions to be heard on the budget in Article Three? If not, we'll call for a vote for Article Three. This does require at least a two-thirds vote to approve because of the stabilization transfer. All those in favor of approving the budget in Article Three as presented by the Finance Committee and recommended by the Finance Committee, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no? It's unanimous. Thank you, and thank you for the work of the financial team and for the Finance Committee. We shall move on to Article Four. Article Four is to see if the town will vote to raise inappropriate transfer from available funds to the sum of $2,522 to the Town Clerk's salary line item for FY 2015 and take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Lovett.
The Finance Committee moves that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $2,552 to be added to the Town Clerk's salary line item for FY 2015.
I'm sorry?
So that the total appropriation for the Town Clerk's salary will equal $66,315.
By state law, elected officials' salaries must be approved at town meeting. The Finance Committee makes a motion to approve the $2,552 to be added to the Town Clerk's salaries. Are there any questions on Article Four? If not, all those in favor of the Finance Committee's recommendation to approve Article Four, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no? It's unanimous. Article Five, see if the town will vote to raise appropriate transfer from available funds to the sum of $19,065 for sick leave buyback for a fire captain EMT who is scheduled to retire on June 6, 2014, or any other action relative thereto. Mr. Lovett.
The Finance Committee moves that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $19,065 for sick leave buyback for a fire captain EMT who is scheduled to retire on June 6, 2014.
The Finance Committee makes a motion to raise and appropriate the required sum in Article Five. Is there anything to be heard in Article Five? If not, all those in favor of the Finance Committee's motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no? It's unanimous. Article Six, see if the town will vote to raise appropriate transfer from available funds, $1,500 for hazardous waste collection for residents for the spring and summer to utilize other towns' hazardous waste days or take any other action relative thereto from the Board of Health. Mr. Lovett.
The Finance Committee moves that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $1,500 for hazardous waste collection for residents to utilize other towns' spring and summer hazardous waste days.
Finance Committee makes a motion to raise appropriate the $1,500 required under Article Six. Anything to be heard in the Finance Committee's recommendation? If not, all those in favor of Article Six—the motion for Article Six, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no? It's unanimous. Articles Seven, Eight, and Nine were all submitted by the Water Commissioners. As I understand it, the Finance Committee is going to make one motion to address those three articles at the same time. The Finance Committee moves to pass over Articles Seven through Nine. Finance Committee makes a motion to pass over Articles Seven through Nine. As I understand it, they might revisit these situations later, but it's been agreed to pass over Articles Seven, Eight, and Nine. Is there anything to be heard for Articles Seven, Eight, and Nine? We'll take one vote to pass over the three articles at the same time. If not, all those in favor of the Finance Committee's recommendation to pass over Articles Seven, Eight, and Nine, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no? Thank you. It's unanimous. Article Ten, see if the town will vote—see if the town will fund $5,000 for services provided to survivors of sexual assault and their families in fiscal 2014, was submitted by petition by New Day. The motion to be presented by the Finance Committee—we'll update that. Go ahead.
The Finance Committee moves that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $5,000 as a grant to a New Day and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into a grant agreement with a New Day, setting forth such terms and conditions as the Board shall deem appropriate.
And obviously, these funds, if approved by the town meeting, will be for the upcoming fiscal year FY 2015. It was a typographical error in the petition, but the Finance Committee has recommended an approval for the FY 2015 budget. Any questions on Article Ten? If not, all those in favor of the Finance Committee's recommendation to raise and appropriate the $5,000 under Article Ten, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no? The ayes have it. It's unanimous. Article Ten, to see if the town—I'm not going to read the whole thing. See if the town will vote to accept the terms of the Masters of Community Preservation Act under Chapter 44B, Sections Three through Seven. It is laid out for you here. We are going to spend a little time to try to educate you on what Article 11 seeks to achieve, but first, I'd like to have the motion to put it on the floor from the Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee moves to pass over Article 11.
Finance Committee makes a motion to pass over Article 11. It's customary that we usually turn the floor over to the—one of the proponents of the article. This was a petition article. The moderator would like to recognize Mr. John Buckley to speak on Article 11. Mr. Buckley.
Mr. Moderator, move that the Article 11 be adopted. I believe it's a—maybe a motion to accept the article. Takes precedence over the passing of the law.
You got to make a motion to adopt it with your amendment?
I moved that the Article 11 be adopted, and before we get into the debate on the main article, I offer the amendment that you have.
Mr. Buckley has submitted—and thank you for the Town Clerk's benefit—the motion to amend Article—Article 11, the wording of Article 11. The one part of the amendment would be, after the words on the top of page five at the end of the article, "One of the exemptions was $100,000 of the value of each taxable parcel of residential real property." His amendment—if you would approve the amendment—would expand the exemption to be $100,000 of residential real property and $100,000 of the value of each taxable parcel of Class III commercial property and Class IV industrial property as defined by Section 2A of Chapter 59. So essentially, expanding the exemption, reducing the tax burden, not only in residential property, but also in commercial and industrial. And the second part of the motion was to clarify or correct a typographical error, which is in the first part of the article, towards the bottom of page four, where it says commencing in fiscal year 2015. He's proposing that that would—actually, it's not a typo, but he's proposing that be amended—that this article, if it passes, would commence in fiscal year 2016. So the article—the article—to approve the article—sorry—the motion to approve the article as amended is on the floor right now. That will be what we'll vote after discussion. Mr. Buckley, I'd like to turn the floor over to you to explain a little bit more about Article 11.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. I filed this article by petition and for the sole intent of bringing Abington into conformance with 18 other communities in Plymouth County, over 160 communities in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, so that they can avail themselves of the money that comes through the Community Preservation Trust Fund. That money is generated at the Registry of Deeds in Plymouth County, in every Registry of Deeds across the Commonwealth, by a surcharge on documents that are filed with the registry, be they deeds, mortgages, liens, or whatever. And that money goes into a trust fund, which is then distributed to those towns which participate in the Community Preservation Act. Now, had Abington been participating at the 1.5% level last year, the town would have received from the Commonwealth—from the trust fund, and the amount of money in conjunction with the money that's raised by the 1.5% on the surcharge, in excess of $400,000, close to $500,000. That money can be used for any number of purposes—in the recreation field, in the historical field, in the housing field. And some of the examples that we have seen in the past few years would relate to the Griffin's Dairy and would continue to relate to Griffin's Dairy, where you could utilize the land at Griffin's Dairy for various recreational activities, be they active or passive. You could use the money for—the—you could have used the money for the restoration of the bronze plaques on Island Grove, on the arch at Island Grove. And in the future, could probably—could use the money for the restoration of the Island Grove Bridge, which will be on the horizon, I'm sure, very soon. Some of the other things that could have been used in years past. Many of you know the work that's been done on Park Avenue for the parking at Island Grove Pond. That was money that came out of a highway budget, which could have come out of a community preservation budget. The 1.5% surtax that would be imposed by this suggested article would amount to less than $40 for 70% of the single-family homes in the town. And I want to thank Jack Pistorino, the chief assessor, for providing me the information relative to the impact of the 1.5% surcharge on the various homes in the community. But we also—and there are a number of condominiums in town, and 97% of the condominiums in town would pay less than $35 annually under the 1.5% surcharge. And any of you who, off the top of your head, happen to know your assessment for—on your real estate can compute the tax. And if you don't, then of course, you can go online and look at the assessors' evaluations that are online, and you would deduct the $100,000 exemption from that assessment, compute the tax, and apply 1.5% to that tax. And as I said, 70% of the properties—and let me step back just a bit—there are roughly 5,200 properties in the town of Abington. The residential properties that are of most interest to all of us, I'm sure, at the present time, there are over 3,000 homes. 70% of them would pay less than $40 annually. Condominiums, there are seven—roughly 700 condominiums. They would pay less than $35 annually if these 1.5% surcharge was imposed. It is not a new act. It's been around since the year 2000, when it was signed by then-Governor Salucci. It has been adopted by 18 communities in Plymouth County, 18 of the 26. It has been adopted by over 160 communities across the Commonwealth, and towns continue to move it to the ballot for approval or disapproval. The town of Allington on the eastern end of the Commonwealth, the town of Conway on the western end, and other communities in between are moving that legislation to their ballot at the next election. And what would happen if the town meeting were to approve it this evening? The proposal would then appear on the state ballot. The law requires that it appears on the next regular election. Primary elections in September don't count, so the next regular election would be in November. The question would then be put to the voters at the election in November to either approve the adoption of the Community Preservation Act with a 1.5% surcharge or not. So my suggestion is that the town has lost an opportunity over the last several years to move on this particular legislation, and I think now is the appropriate time to do that. And I'll give you another example. Hanover is roughly the same size as Abington. They have adopted the Community Preservation Act. Over the course of the last year, calendar 2013, the citizens of Hanover sent to the Registry of Deeds roughly $60,000 in surcharges. The town of Abington, the taxpayers in Abington did likewise when they filed their deeds and mortgages and other legal documents with the Registry of Deeds. And in return, the town of Hanover, because they participate in the Community Preservation Act, received a distribution of $521,000. At Abington, of course, since we do not participate, receive nothing. The use of the money is dictated by the statute. The statute also calls for a community preservation committee to be established by law in the town of Abington, which would—by the statute require, remember, the planning board, the Conservation Commission, the Historical Commission, and other individuals in the town to make up—the comedian—to make their recommendations to the town meeting for their approval as to how that money should be spent. And there's a requirement that you must spend at least 10% for open space and recreation, at least 10% for historic resources, at least 10% for community housing. And it is not necessary, for example, to spend the 10% on community housing in a given year, as long as you set aside the 10% for future use. And there is an ability for the town to bond based on the cash flow that comes from the Community Preservation Trust Fund. And there's a handout in the rear of the hall where one of the pages happens to cite the town of Stoughton. That's only the latest example, and that's why it's there. But the town of Stoughton is floating a bond, I believe, of $2.5 million, and it's going to be sustained by the cash flow from the Community Preservation Trust Fund. And so that—with $2.5 million, obviously, you can do a number of different things. And if any of you are involved in youth sports and youth activities, and you've looked at the layout in the town of Hanover, where they have spent hundreds of thousands, if not millions, of dollars in enhancing the value of their youth activities, those are some of the examples that neighboring towns can cite to you, and it seems to me an opportunity that the town should avail itself of. And let me, Mr. Moderator, if I may, in the hope of shortening the debate somewhat, preempt some of the arguments that are against the adoption of the Community Preservation Act. I have no response to an argument that's just—it just shouldn't be done. But there is a sense in the town that with the—some members of the town—that with the school issue impending, that to impose an additional burden on the taxpayers of the town at this time would be untimely and ill-considered. And I recognize full well the work that Mr. Schaefer and the superintendent and the school committee and the school building committee have done in their effort to bring forward to the town the necessity to construct a new combination middle school and high school. And I also understand that that is, of course, in my judgment, the highest priority that the town will face in the next two to three years. But it should not paralyze the town from doing anything else. And when I looked at the numbers and saw that the impact on a single-family home—70% of the single-family homes would pay less than $40 annually, 97% of the condominium dwellers would pay less than $35 annually. So I think it's an issue that—where we have a perception that has begun to become reality, that it is perceived we cannot add this burden onto a taxpayer because of the impending burden that the schools will bring to the taxpayers of Abington. It really depends on what kind of a— It really depends on what kind of a town you want to live in, and whether or not you want to take advantage of the opportunity that is offered. And anytime it seems to me that you can invest a dollar and receive back a return at a minimum of 27 or 28 cents on that dollar, and last year it was 53 to 54 cents on the dollar, and this year will probably be the same because the state has added to the, or is in the process of adding, money to the Community Preservation Trust Fund. So I would hope, Mr. Moderator, this meeting would bring this issue forward to the next regular election, which is in November, let the townspeople of the entire electorate have a chance to decide what kind of a town they will want to live in. And, Mr. Moderator, I hope the motion is adopted.
Thank you, Mr. Buckley. Mr. Buckley makes a motion to approve Article 11 as he amended it, which we'll go into detail in a second. Under our rules, if we have a negative motion to pass over, which the Finance Committee put, and a positive motion to approve, the vote eventually will be on the positive motion to approve, just so we know that, and I'll repeat that before we do vote. Mr. Buckley, thank you. It's very, I gave you some extra time there because there's a lot of information to get out there. I hope he did answer some questions ahead of time, but if there are any questions, please raise your hand and come to the microphone, sir.
With respect of Mr. Buckley
Mr. Deulitz. And the town of Abington. Mr. Deulitz, just your name and address.
My name is Melville Deulitz, 438 Rockland Street, that's in the good town of Abington. I'm going to tell you one thing. First of all, Mr. Buckley brought up the town of Hanover. Has anyone been to Hanover and seen the assessments on some of these homes, and what they have and what we don't have? How can we compare that town with our town? And I challenge the committee here to come up and say why they don't want this in there. The only reason why I'm standing up here is to try to defend the committee that they're working for us, and I'd like to have them explain why they disapprove of this.
Thank you, Mr. Deulitz. Mr. Lovett, Chairman of the Finance Committee.
The concern from the Finance Committee was, as Mr. Buckley talked about, the school that's coming. Tonight, there's a, Article 26 is asking for up to $1.2 million for a fire truck. It's just, it's another tax on top of those that we've had in the past, was the meals tax.
Thank you, Mr. Lovett. Any other questions to be heard on Article 11? Moderator recognizes Paul Donlin.
Paul Donlin, 40 Pond Street. It is my understanding that there might be a sunset clause in this, possibly three years, five years, is that true? You can put it to another vote in five years. Would that take town meeting approval, the ballot box approval, to amend that, to get it out?
You would, it's the same procedure to
The same procedure.
Right. In order to enact it, town meeting has to approve it, and then it goes to the ballot box election, and it must be approved there. If it was to be amended or withdrawn, it would go another town meeting action, another ballot election, five years down the road. All right? Moderator recognizes Mr. Burbine, and if you'd like to get over to the microphone and be ready for the next question, feel free.
Just a couple of things. I wanted to report to you what the Board of Selectmen voted also. We took a vote on whether or not to recommend this, and we voted, as the Finance Committee did, to recommend passing over, basically for the same reasons that the Finance Committee did. Timing is everything, and it's our belief, my belief also, that we have a school building coming up probably in January, which is going to, if it passes, increase people's taxes substantially. Tonight, we're going to be voting on a $1.2 million fire truck, which we need desperately. That, in our likelihood, is going to be borrowed, and we're going to have to probably do a debt exclusion or a capital exclusion, which will increase your taxes again. We have the landfill issue, which we're going to have to deal with in the next year or so, that may also take a debt exclusion question. So these things do pile up. I know Mr. Buckley says that it's only $40, but $40 on top of $60, on top of $80, on top of whatever, and it starts to mean real money to you folks. So I just think you guys need to understand, if you do adopt this and it does get adopted at the ballot, that there are other things coming down the road. I do agree with Mr. Deulitz, it is apples and oranges as far as Hanover and Abington. Mr. Buckley's statistics are correct, but Hanover has adopted a 3% surcharge on their real estate taxes. That's not what we're looking for here, or that's not what Mr. Buckley is looking for. He's looking for a 1.5% increase. The 1.5% increase also does not get you full reimbursement. You only get Level 1, which is about 80% of whatever is collected in the trust fund, goes out in that first round. That is all we would be eligible for. We wouldn't be eligible for Rounds 2 and 3. Maybe a similar town to Abington is probably Hanson. In fiscal year 2013, excuse me, the tax, let's see, the tax surcharge that was collected in Hanson was about $164,000. The CPA fund, which was from the trust fund, which is what came from the trust fund, was about $39,845. I think we're probably closer to Hanson than we are to Hanover. I think for $39,000, $50,000, I'm not sure it's worth it at this point in time. We do need things, we do need things that Mr. Buckley talks about, but again, timing is everything, and I'm not sure this is the best time to be doing this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burbine. Yes, ma'am.
Martha Kraft, 175 Damon Road. I'd like to speak in favor of this article. I've been in Abington for three and a half years. Prior to that, I lived in the town of Eyre. I know, nobody knows where Eyre is, but it's way to the west, and it's a small town. And we passed this at one and a half percent, and I can't, and we must have done it at the very beginning of the CPA, because they were doing it while I was there for quite a few years, so we must have had it for seven years now, or they must have. And they did great things with it. They refurbished a whole swimming area, they had, you know, sports teams that got money. Unfortunately, I didn't do the homework because I didn't know, I was going to have to get up and speak in favor of it. But it's like a savings account. And so instead of needing X amount of dollars down the road, you're going to have money there to use for things. I'm a person who would qualify not only there but here for the exemption, and I would not exempt myself from this, because I think this is a really good program. So I would just encourage you all to vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kraft. Is there anything else to be heard on Article 11? Moderator recognizes Mr. Buckley and Mr. Hughes, if you'd like to take the microphone. I saw another hand, if you want to move to the, if you want to move to the microphone, we'll move along the discussion.
Let me just respond to a couple of the points that have been made here at the microphone, and one to my friend Mel about Hanover. I'm not making comparison about the wealth of Hanover with the wealth of Abington. What I make any comparison of is the money that's paid by the citizens of Hanover to the Registry of Deeds in comparison to the money that was paid by citizens of Abington to the Registry of Deeds, and the return that Hanover got in contrast to the return that Abington got. And the return was well in excess of $400,000 in Hanover's, I believe, and the return at Abington was nothing. But it seems to me that timing is everything. And I noticed that there was a substantive, or a different motion, or a possibility of a different motion by the Finance Committee to refer it to a study. And I can recall, 48 years ago, town meeting, different arena, it was at the Frollo School, had a petition article set up a housing authority in the town of Abington. And the chairman of the Planning Board at that time, and it wasn't Wayne Smith, believe it or not, it was not Wayne Smith, made a motion to refer it to a study because the ramifications on the town of Abington were unknown. Well, obviously, the town meeting did not go along with the study, the housing authority was established, and the housing for the senior citizens on Lincoln Boulevard, Article 1, and Abbotway, and Shaw Avenue were established. But because the town faces a number of different problems in the coming years, there are other communities that build schools and have a community, and have adopted the Community Preservation Act. There are other communities that have extraordinary expenses, that have availed themselves of investing a dollar and getting back a dollar fifty or a dollar fifty-three. And Andy is right about the level of funding. But the level of funding that Abington would have received last year would have been 31% without the appropriation from the state legislature, which threw in an extra $25 million and brought it into the 52 to 53 range. And then there were other incremental steps for those who participated in Round 2 and 3, but they were minor incremental steps. So the perception that the town cannot move forward on issues because there are too many issues to deal with, or because there are too many dollars to deal with, is a perception that has become a mindset in the town of Abington, to the detriment of the progress of the town, in my judgment. So I would hope that we could approve it tonight, put it on the state election ballot in November, and see if the townspeople as a whole, or the voting public as a whole at that time, would approve the adoption of the Community Preservation Act.
Thank you, Mr. Buckley. Moderator recognizes Mr. Bruce Hughes.
Hi, everyone. I'm Bruce Hughes, 69 Randolph Street in Abington, and Vice Chair of the Abington Planning Board. I don't speak for the Planning Board, but I speak as, in my professional life, I'm a planner for the Old Colony Planning Council. And of our 16 communities, which include Abington, 10 of them have the CPA. Now, I've worked for Old Colony for a long time, I've been a professional planner for a long time, and I've seen the good things that CPA can do for the communities that they are. I mean, it's not just the housing and the open space, it's the recreation, it's the money. It's, I'm not going to lecture on citizenship, but passing this would enable the town to do good things for the community. I know it's another tax. I mean, I know when we're facing a school, and I pay fairly decent taxes in this town, I've lived in this town 60 years, but it's worth it to me. It's part of citizenship, it's part of doing good for the community, enabling the community to be able to do good things with the money that we would do. It's a small burden compared to what the community would get back, and I support my friend Jack Buckley in supporting this article.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Is there anything further to be heard? The very attractive woman at the microphone in the middle of the floor. Please state your name and address. Can't take her anywhere. Oh, you better not have broken that. That's going to come out of my moderator's salary, of which there is none. Why don't you come up front, young lady? Oh, sure, give it to Dave Drew, he can fix anything. Dave, if you could bring it to the guys out back, I think they could fix it if it needs fixing. Thank you. Moderator recognizes Ann Riley.
Ann Riley, 262 Adams Street. I agree with the previous speaker. I have seen so many things being done with the Community Preservation Act at all the different, various towns on the Cape, from a new Bass River fishing area, all these recreation things that you can't take out of your regular budget. People just don't have the money for things like that, but this is like a savings account to put away for, like that, the good things for the citizens of the town. It's not going to break any of us, but it's going to help for the goodwill of all of us. I hope that we will pass this article. I truly support it, and I hope that it does go through.
Thank you very much. Be careful on your way back to the seat. Moderator recognizes Mr. Tom Dion, Member of the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As a member of the Selectmen, I was the one dissenting vote, I voted to approve this. And as I listened to the debate, I'm a little concerned that, you know, you basically have a small group of people that were not voting to adopt it right here. What we're voting to do is to put it on the November ballot. The things that attracted me, because initially I was not in favor of it, but again, I think if you look at the information that's been prepared by Mr. Buckley, but more so, you know, the people that promote this, it does seem like it's a good deal. No instance that I know when you pay your property tax that the state's going to come in and reimburse you. Right now, as Mr. Buckley said, it's going to be 25 cents on every dollar of your property tax on the surcharge, and I think the state has approved more. Mr. Donlin pointed out, it's five years, you're making a commitment for five years, you know, to adopt this. The state has established a $25 million state fund that frankly, Abington doesn't participate in. Those other 18 communities, whatever Mr. Buckley said, do. I'm not sure, but again, I heard some numbers, but the projections on 1.5 surtax on your property with a $100,000 exemption would result in close to $300,000 coming into the community of Abington. And as Mr. Buckley pointed out, it's really intended for open space, Griffin's Dairy comes to mind, but affordable housing, and affordable housing isn't to build necessarily more of it, it's to keep people like seniors in their house where we have a program going on now, you could use the funds for that. And the other thing, in talking to a town manager for recreational use, again, as we move to potentially vote on a new high school, there's going to be some disruption of recreational fields. Money from this, with help from other communities, can be used to build those particular fields. Landfill was mentioned, and indeed, if the landfill is just capped without any additional use, this money can't be used. But, and again, it's under consideration now. The landfill is basically capped for other use, whether it be solar or fields or whatever, this money can be used. So I would encourage you to pass this article, Mr. Buckley's motion, and put it on the November ballot, and let the other 11, 12,000 members of this town have a shot at looking at the information and voting it up or down. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dion. It's been a lot said, some good information back and forth, unless there's anything new to be heard, or if anyone would like to speak. Mr. Coyle.
I'm honestly not sure if I have anything new to say, but I'm a taxpayer, I'm not speaking as a Selectman, I'm speaking as a taxpayer. And I've been asked a lot if I want to support the new schools. And I gave it a lot of thought at the candidate's nights, I said, yes, I want to support the new schools. And anybody who knows how cheap I am and how much trouble I have men's making me, my family does, knows that I am having a tough time paying that amount of money, but it's worth it. But to add more stuff on to that, more money on to that, and we have no guarantees that we're going to get money from the state, it's going to be continually funded. It started out as a match, now it's already down to, you know, at 1%, you don't get that much. And I'm also concerned that, we've done pretty good in Abington, funding things, Griffin's, these are things that have been listed as possible uses for the CPA money, Griffin's Dairy, Island Grove Arch, these are things that we, as a town meeting and at the ballot box, voted for. And we've done pretty good funding these things on our own, raising our own taxes. I am concerned that this group, the Community Preservation Group that's formed, I think it's going to be seven members, they're going to come to town meeting before you and say, we have this much money, we want to use it for this, we want to use it for that. I have a concern that, you know, they could stockpile money, you know, a little slush fund, and then we have enough money, we're going to do this, we're going to do that. I want to make that choice. I want to get there and vote the ballot to raise my own taxes, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Coyle. Mr. Buckley, I'll give you a short leash, and then we're going to move to a vote. Okay. Always wanted to say that to you.
Let me speak to the last point first, as to who would make a decision on how the money would be spent. The money would be spent at the direction of the town meeting. The Community Preservation Committee would come in with recommendations for approval or disapproval by the town meeting. The town meeting will vote. And let me speak to one of the other issues that he raised, which is an absolute red herring. This money is not dependent upon the state appropriation process. This money is money that is collected at the registries of deeds across the Commonwealth. If you had got into the program early, for the first two or three years, in conjunction with the real estate market was red hot, then you've got 100% reimbursement. The real estate market has gone down, it has leveled off, and it's moderately come back. And in addition to that, the state legislature And in addition to that, the state legislature for last year and, again, this year, included twenty-five million dollars added to the trust fund, so that the reimbursement factor will be in excess of fifty percent, whether you're at the eighty percent level that Andy spoke about, or if you're at the hundred percent level, you participate in rounds two or three. So the fact of the matter is, if you're going to invest a dollar and get back a dollar fifty-two, it makes no sense to me not to do that, or to, at least as Mr. Dion suggested, let the other ten or eleven thousand voters decide that. So I thought it was important to respond to the two of the issues that the chairman raised.
Thank you, Mr. Buckley. Go ahead, Mr. Burbine. Moderator recognizes Mr. Andrew Burbine.
Again, this is a tax, this is going to be a one and a half percent cert, it's a surcharge, it's a tax on your real, it's an additional real estate tax, number one. Number two, three out of the last four years, the percentage that was matched, twenty-seven percent, twenty-six percent, twenty-six percent, in this past year, as Mr. Buckley said, fifty-two percent, but part of that is because the state funded that. That's not always going to happen. The last time this was fully funded was two thousand and eight, at a hundred percent. The last six months, collections into the trust fund, percentage change from last year to this year, minus sixteen point four percent, minus twenty-eight point two percent, minus thirty-two point three percent, minus twenty point three percent, minus forty-seven point five percent, minus thirty-two point six percent. These are just things that you folks should know, if you're going to, when you're voting for this.
Thank you, Mr. Burbine.
Mr. Moderator.
Hold on, Mr. Donovan, you're at the microphone.
I'd like to, I'd like to move the question, please.
Sorry, Mr. Buckley. You've done a great job, as has everyone, and I really appreciate the tone of the debate and the information you've shared with the voters. Mr. Donovan makes a motion to move the debate. We'll take that motion first. If you approve his motion to move, to end, geez, to move the question, we will stop talking about Article eleven, and then we'll take a vote on whether to approve it or not. So, your first motion is a motion to end the debate. All those in favor of moving the question for Article eleven, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. The debate will end for Article eleven. Now, we will vote on the positive motion, which is that offered by the proponent, Mr. Buckley, and that is with the two amendments to the printed materials, the amendment meaning that it will commence in fiscal year two thousand and sixteen, and that the one hundred thousand exemption will expand beyond just residential real property to also include a one hundred thousand dollar exemption to the value of each taxable parcel of class three commercial property and class four industrial properties defined in section two A of chapter fifty-nine. So if you understand, so if you vote aye, you will be approving Mr. Buckley's motion. If you vote no, you will be voting against Mr. Buckley. All right? All that being said, all those in favor of approving Mr. Buckley's motion to approve Article eleven as he presented with his amendments, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
Very good. We need a majority vote, and I am not that skilled to make that decision, so we're going to have to count. So I'm going to ask my four counters, if you could please stand, Mr. Esaw, Mr. Drew, Mr. Malika, and Mr. Donovan. At this time, if you would like to vote aye to support Mr. Buckley's motion, please stand, and please remain standing until I ask you to sit. Please stand if you would like to vote in the affirmative. Mr. Drew, don't forget the Finance Committee. Mr. Donovan?
Eight.
I'm sorry, eight?
Eight.
Eight. Mr. Malika?
Seventeen.
Seventeen. Mr. Drew?
Twenty-nine.
Mr. Esaw?
Thirty-one.
Please be seated. All those who would like to vote no in Article eleven as presented by Mr. Buckley, please stand and remain standing. Mr., oh, wait, he's still counting, he's got his shoes off. Mr. Donovan?
Twenty-two.
Mr. Malika?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. Mr. Drew?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three. Mr. Esaw?
Twenty.
The ayes were eighty-five, the noes were ninety, Article eleven does not pass. Thank you for your discussion. There'll be no recount unless seven people want to say that we counted wrong, and I don't trust the seven people standing on that top row. All right, before we move on to Article twelve, the town clerk has asked me to announce that if you can please remind the residents of Abington to please update their census information, you can call the town clerk's office at any time to verify your census status over the phone. At the end of June, those who have not updated their census could become inactive on the voter rolls, and they will be doing a mailing at the end of the month. So please contact the town clerk's office at nine eight two two one one two. Thank you. Mr. Smith, if so.
Yes, Richard Smith, ninety-nine Dorsey Street. With all the discussion of Article twenty-six, I'd make a motion that we move for discussion on Article twenty-six.
Mr. Smith is asking that we bring Article twenty-six forward out of order. Article twenty-six is the last article printed in your warrant, and that is the item about the new aerial vehicle for the fire department. Town meeting can take it out of order if it's a four-fifths or greater vote. If that vote doesn't pass, it'll stay where it is as number twenty-six. So I'm going to ask for a vote right now of whether the town meeting would like to discuss the fire department vehicle right now out of order, and then we'll proceed in order with the rest of the articles. If it is not a unanimous vote, we will have to count the four-fifths. Any questions on the motion? So the motion would be to bring up Article twenty-six right now. All those in favor of bringing Article twenty-six out of order for discussion right now, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
I can't declare it not being four-fifths, so we're going to have to take a count, unfortunately. So, right, I can't declare that by law. I mean, it fails. No, it wasn't close, it was even Steven, sorry, Mr. Richard. Well, that's true, one more time and see if it's either unanimous one way or the other, then I can declare it. So all those in favor of moving Article twenty-six forward, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, signify by saying?
No.
Okay, unfortunately, I have to do a quick count. All those in favor of moving Article twenty-six forward right now, please stand and remain standing to be counted.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight. Mr. Malika?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. Mr. Drew?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven. Mr. Esaw?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four. Please be seated. Those who would like to vote no and not take the article out of order, please stand and remain standing to be counted.
Three.
Three. Mr. Malika?
Twelve.
Twelve. Mr. Drew?
Thirteen.
Thirteen. Mr. Esaw?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. We have to do our math, and I know some of you are going to beat me to it. One hundred and sixteen voting in the affirmative, fifty-five voting in the negative, for a total of one hundred and seventy-one voters, that's a sixty-seven percentage. We needed eighty percent, so the motion to bring it forward does not pass. We'll continue on with Article twelve. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
Article twelve. At this point, I'm going to step down and invite our assistant moderator, Mr. Dennisburg, going to take over and proceed over Article twelve.
Article twelve is the acceptance of new roadways as public ways. There are three roads that you would accept, and so the article is in three parts. A, to see if the town will vote to accept as townways the roadway known as Bradford Street, as heretofore laid out by the Board of Selectmen. As such roadway is shown on the plan entitled Layout Plan, roadway acceptance as built plan, and profiles of Bradford Street, Abington, Mass., prepared by the Russell Wheatley Company, dated January eleventh, two thousand and twelve, revised January eighth, two thousand and fourteen, on file with the town clerk, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by gift, purchase eminent domain or otherwise easements in said roadway, together with all related drainage, utility, and other easements, or to take any other action relative thereto. B, the second one, is to see if the town will vote to accept as townways the roadway known as the Collantini roadway, as heretofore laid out by the Board of Selectmen. As such roadway is shown on the plan entitled Roadway Acceptance Plan and Profile in Abington, Mass., Collantini roadway, prepared for the Mustafield Investments LLC, dated October twenty-eighth, two thousand and thirteen, prepared by the Wheatley Company, on file with the town clerk, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by gift, purchase eminent domain or otherwise easements in said roadway, together with all related drainage, utility, and other easements, or to take any other action relative thereto. Ah, sorry. Thank you. And C, the last one, to see if the town will vote to accept as townways the roadway known as Jean Carroll Road, as heretofore laid out by the Board of Selectmen. As such roadway is shown on the plan entitled Road as Built Plan, Jean Carroll Road, Birchwood Knoll Two in Abington, Massachusetts, prepared by Lanning, Inc., dated September sixth, two thousand and thirteen, revised through February third, two thousand and fourteen, on file with the town clerk, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by gift, purchase eminent domain or otherwise easements in said roadway, together with all related drainage, utility, and other easements, or to take any other action relative thereto. Phew. Okay, Mr. Lovett.
The Finance Committee defers to the Planning Board.
Mr. Smith? For the Planning Board.
Wayne Smith, one twenty Summit Road, Chairman of the Planning Board. The Planning Board moves that the town accept as townways the roadways identified in Article twelve A, twelve B, and twelve C in the warrant, and authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by gift, purchase eminent domain or otherwise easements in said roadways, together with all relative drainage, utility, and other easements.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Is there anything to be said on this article? If there isn't, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against, say nay. Okay, it's been passed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bergen. We move to Article thirteen, a reauthorization of revolving funds. Mr. Lovett?
The Finance Committee moves that the town vote pursuant to GL Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three and E and a half, to reauthorize the revolving funds as specified in the chart set forth in the warrant under Article thirteen, provided, however, that the FY fifteen expenditure limit under Item C shall be approved at two thousand dollars.
If I ask you to make some motion to approve, reauthorize the revolving funds as specified in the chart, at the chart in your warrant under Article thirteen with the amendment that the limit in Item C will be two thousand dollars instead of the fifteen hundred dollars. Are there any questions with any of the articles? We'll have one vote for all of them. Yes, sir.
Yeah, Paul Joyce, forty-six Island Street. Just a question on the amounts shown in the limit, is that the maximum income and out of those accounts in a given fiscal year?
Mr. LaFond? Maximum expenditure.
For the whole year.
For the whole year.
Okay.
So even if they take in more, they cannot expend more than what's listed or approved by the town meeting tonight. Any other questions on Article thirteen? If not, all those in favor of approving the Finance Committee's motion, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Article fourteen, to see if the town will vote to transfer seventy-five thousand dollars from the amount appropriated under Article four of the Continued Special Town Meeting of November fourteenth, two thousand and twelve, for the replacement and repair of the Frollo Garaventa, to the school department for purchase of new textbooks for Abington Public Schools in FY two thousand and fifteen, and take any other action relative thereto, submitted by the school committee. Mr. Lovett?
The Finance Committee moves that the town approve Article fourteen as set forth in the warrant.
And just to answer an anticipated question, the Garaventa is basically the chairlift that goes up the stairway in the old Frollo School. Anything to be heard, or any questions on Article fourteen? If not, all those in favor of the Finance Committee's recommendation to approve Article fourteen, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Article fifteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a transfer from available funds, fourteen thousand dollars for student transportation services to Abington students attending out-of-district vocational schools as non-resident students for the two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen school year, or take any other action relative thereto.
The Finance Committee moves that the town raise and appropriate the sum of fourteen thousand dollars for student transportation services for Abington students attending out-of-district vocational schools as non-resident students for the two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen school year.
The Finance Committee moves that the town raise and appropriate the fourteen thousand dollars for the purposes in Article fifteen. Anything to be heard in Article fifteen? If not, all those in favor of approving the Finance Committee's motion, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Article sixteen, to see if the town will vote to amend the general bylaws of the town of Abington, Section one fifty-two dash four regarding the quorum. To reduce the quorum required for special and annual meetings by deleting the strike-through language and inserting in place thereof the underlying language as follows, it shall read that the quorum of any annual or special town meeting shall be seventy-five registered voters of the town. Or to take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Lovett?
The Finance Committee moves that the town amend the general bylaws, Section one fifty-two dash four, quorum, by striking the number one hundred and fifty and inserting in its place the number seventy-five, so that the bylaw provides as follows, the quorum of any annual or special town meeting shall be seventy-five registered voters of the town.
The Finance Committee makes a motion to approve Article sixteen to reduce the quorum to seventy-five registered voters. Is there anything to be heard on the Finance Committee's motion to reduce the quorum? If not, all those in favor of approving the Finance Committee's motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
I get a, I don't want to count again, but we may just have to. All those in, actually, let's do a hand count, I'm going to raise your hands. All those in favor of approving the quorum reduction to seventy-five, please raise your hands. All those, well, please put your hands down. All those opposed, please raise your hands. I'm going to have to do a count to make sure, yeah, sorry. So, counters, you're earning your pay today. All those in favor of reducing the quorum to seventy-five, please stand and remain standing.
Nineteen.
Nineteen. Mr. Malika?
Twenty.
Twenty. Mr. Drew?
Fifteen.
Mr. Esaw?
Twelve.
Twelve. Please be seated. Oh, you already are. All those opposed to reducing the quorum to seventy-five, please stand and remain standing. Does require a majority vote.
Fourteen.
Fourteen. Mr. Malika?
Eighteen.
Mr. Drew?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five. Mr. Esaw?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six. Please be seated. The ayes were sixty-six, the noes were one oh three, the motion does not pass to change the quorum, the quorum was made at one hundred and fifty voters. We'll move to Article seventeen. Nothing will further be heard in Article sixteen. Article seventeen, see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to seek special legislation and amend the town charter, Section three dash sixteen, to address the process for filling vacancies in elected offices as set forth below. Mr. Lovett?
The Finance Committee moves to pass over Article seventeen.
The Finance Committee moves to pass over Article seventeen, which is submitted by the Board of Selectmen. Someone would like to speak? Umbea, Mr. Frainey. Moderator recognizes Mr. Michael Frainey.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mike Frainey, seven twenty-six Washington Street. The reason I put this in here is by our town charter, if we have a vacancy in an office, an elected office, the requirements are, number one, the board that has a vacancy has to notify the Board of Selectmen. At that point in time, we post it, for ten days, according to the charter. At the end of ten days, we can't accept any further applications. We, the charter states that we have to have a meeting within fourteen days of the posting. We, the Charter states that we have to have a meeting within 14 days of the posting, and after 30 days, it expires. So, what has happened three times in the past is we've had a vacancy in an elected office, we posted it, we accepted applications, the candidates that applied for these positions showed up, and we did not get the entire membership of the board or a quorum of the board that had the vacancy. This happened three times. So, my language, after much, would be to simply say, we'd change the language, not the remaining members, but the members that were in attendance would vote. Because in my honest opinion, you could not show up for the posting in January, we wouldn't be able to fill the position. We'd have to go and repost it again by the Charter. February could come, we could post it again. The members still don't have to show up, so we have to post it again. And we could go on and on until it went all the way up to the election, which would allow a board to sit there with less than five members, which was the intention of the electorate. So, in all recognition of the Finance Committee, I don't think I've ever got up and spoke against the Finance Committee, but in this particular instance, I, I believe this is absolutely in the best interest of the town. It was very embarrassing for me as a member of the board to sit there and have candidates show up and sit in the audience, and the members that needed the vacancy, for one reason or another, and they might have been valid, but only one or two were there. And my motion is that, yes, we would vote to bill the vacancy the same way, but just with the members in attendance. We would not have to cancel and repost it. So I don't know if anybody has any questions. It's just a simple change from requiring the members, the remaining members would be there, and then we could take the vote, and I'm just saying, the members that are in attendance. So if you want to show up, fine, show up, and we'll vote, and we'll get it over with. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Franny. Moderator recognizes Mr. Joseph Shea.
Joseph Shea, 3 Wyman Road. I have a, I have no problem with the article, or the next article. Matter of fact, I, you know, I've spoken in favor of the DPW before. I have a problem with the way it's worded. As I always have understood it in the past, charter changes go to the electorate for vote at a pub, at a public vote. I know we have voted on the DPW at the town elections before. I would have no problem if that put on, if possible, put on the state election, but I have a problem with charter changes being passed by the town meeting only. I think unless something has changed, that's against our past tradition. I would make a motion that this be amended to require it to go, and the town clerk may be the answer to this, could this go on the November election? Or go on the next, the next town, the next election that the town can be put on. I don't think we should have charter changes going on, happening without the entire town being able to take part in that vote, as they have in the past. So I'll make that amendment, that if it put on the next, if, if passed, we put on a next ballot available to the town.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Mr. Shea is making a motion to amend the article. As it's written, your approval would allow the Selectmen to submit special legislation to the General Court, and once the state legislator approved it, if town meeting approved it tonight, then any voted change would take effect. Mr. Shea is requesting the utilization of a different procedure. Does Town Council or Town Manager want to speak to the availability of a different procedure, or is it, or Mr. Franny, whoever would like to speak? Or both? Quickly?
I chaired the Charter Review Committee a number of years ago, and we do have the option as a town meeting, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Fair, but we can vote it as a town meeting. And then the people from the state asked us, you know what would be a good idea? If town meeting endorses the changes that we made at the change, at the charter at that time, to put it on the ballot. And that's only because it was such a big change. We changed from a, to a strong town manager, from a government. This is really a simple charter change. It's up to you guys whether you not want to do it. I, I don't think it's, to me, it's not a big deal. To me, it's important to be able to get the business of the town done, I will say that, but it's up to you guys. It does not have to go to the ballot, so, just so you know, that, but again, that's your call.
Great. Do you want to add anything to that, or? Yes. Moderator recognizes Town Council Attorney Fair. Mr. Franny, he's just pointing out that right now, the motion, we don't recall if you made a motion to pass it over, I mean, sorry, to approve Article. Okay, so I'm going to take that there is a motion on the floor from Mr. Franny to approve Article 17 as presented. There's also a motion now from Mr. Shea to amend Article 17, and we're trying to work out that detail. Attorney Fair.
So, as Mr. Franny indicated, in terms of making charter changes, the process that is being put before you is actually how some of your more recent charter changes have been made. You've made some changes in terms of how the, the warrant is presented, whether or not it has, a copy has to be sent to everybody, as opposed to now we just send a postcard. So, the process that's being proposed here by Mr. Franny is consistent with how you've made some recent charter changes. I can't speak to the specific issue that the prior speaker had referred to, it was before my time, but in terms of this process, it's specifically allowed for in the law and is consistent with what this town meeting has done in the past.
Can I ask for clarification? Does the town have the option to proceed with either procedure by, after a town meeting vote, that they can either require that it be approved at a, a local ballot election, or that it be submitted as special legislation to the State House?
Well, I guess it's not really clear to me at this point how this is being constructed. The town meeting right now, what it'd be voting on is authorizing the Board of Selectmen to send it forward. As Mr. Franny mentioned, there are some times, depending on the nature of the change, if it's significant enough, the General Court may say, well, we'd really like to hear, not just from town meeting, but the, the registered voters as a whole, and they will ask for a ballot vote. It's not the usual course, particularly on a change of this kind, that you would actually send it to a ballot vote, particularly there is some additional expense that may be associated with something, you know, small as this. But that having been said, I guess I'm not clear in terms of how the moving party is actually looking for this process to take place. In other words, are we approving this, authorizing the Selectmen to send it to the legislature, and then asking that a ballot vote be taken after the legislature has hacked it, because...
I don't believe that was Mr. Shea's motion. I think Mr. Shea wants to change the procedure, that's his motion to amend. Where are you, Joe? There you are. Right, Joe, you want it, if it passes here, it's going to, you would like it to go to a local ballot election, not go via special legislation, is that correct?
That is my understanding of the history of ballot, of charter changes in the town of Abington, as long as I can remember. May some others have done it that way. This is a minor one, I agree. The next one is surely not a minor one, and that was surely put on the ballot in 1999.
All right, we'll get to the next one in the next discussion, but we have done it both ways in, in the past.
Ballot before the, before the legislature. The town people, townspeople deserve to speak.
That's your motion, okay. That motion is pending. Let me listen to some of the members of the town, and we'll see.
And let me, now that I understand the motion, give me a moment, and I'll also weigh in on that as well.
Great. Sir, name and address.
Patrick Sean Tyler, 10 Warner Road, Vice Chairman of the Abington Finance Committee. Speaking as a taxpayer here, I'm just going to give you a handful, a stream of consciousness. I was the main dissenting vote on the Finance Committee as it relates to this particular article. No sooner would I vote for a reduction in the quorum, would I vote for what seems to be a usurpation of my liberty and my democracy as it relates to how I decide to take action. I think what we need to look at and keep sight of is in this particular article, if I believe, I'm asking you to vote down the affirmative that was put forward by Mr. Franny. If you look in this particular article under Section 1, the key piece that jumps out at me is, however that such meeting may be held and action taken to fill the vacancy, as long as a quorum of the Board of Selectmen is present. So with that stated, incumbent in the right to act is the right to not act, incumbent in the right to decide is the right to not decide. We've seen in recent history, folks vote with their feet. To compel action, to surrender action, and to consolidate authority and power into one board, seems to be a fundamental mistake. I think much like we have here tonight, we saw a previous motion to move an article out of order, and I'm certain, I can only speculate, with the fear of losing a quorum. So no sooner would you surrender your quorum call in a town meeting than you, than should you surrender the right to have the quorum of a board that has a vacancy in conjunction with the Board of Selectmen to make their decisions to fill those vacancies, not leave it just to the Board of Selectmen. Thank you.
So he's against it. Please state your name and address.
Paul Joyce, 46 Highland Street, Abington. I, I agree with Sean as well. I don't think this is the right fix. I recognize that this may have caused some problems in the past, but I don't think the solution to the problem, as Sean stated, is to delegate the power solely into the hands of the Selectmen. I think the, the boards that form the support of this town serve a lot of purposes for the town, and serving as advocates for the members of the town, separate from the Board of Selectmen as well. I think there should be another solution proposed.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Mr. Franny? In the interest of time, if anyone else has any comments, please make your way to the microphone.
I, I don't know what the solution is, and I think I propose the solution. And I, I don't know how you vote with your feet, as was spoken before, because I guess there's a lot of people that are voting by the fact they're not here with their feet while they sit at home and watch TV, and I'm here. So basically, I'm trying to get the business of the town done by saying, listen, if you want to vote no, fine, vote no. And I'm not, this is not saying that the Board of Selectmen in and of itself is going to make the determination. The Board of Selectmen are going to follow the Charter. The committee with the, with the vacancy is going to be invited to come before us. However, the way it works now, if they chose not to come, we can't fill that appointment. We're trying to follow the Charter. I don't know if you don't understand that, but we're trying to follow the provisions of the Charter, certainly not trying to take over, by any stretch of the imagination. But if there's a vacancy in the Board of Health, and it's a five-member board, or there's vacancy in the parking record, two vacancies, the Town Charter provides for us to fill it. And what I'm telling you tonight is, we've tried that on three occasions in the recent past, and it hasn't worked. So all I'm saying is, if the members can't go, just the members that are in attendance are going to be invited, and invited to vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, please state your name and address.
Will Adamsick, 351 Ashland Street. I'm just curious if the Charter specifies that the vote has to be at a Board of Selectmen meeting. If you're looking to have the members of the elected body, can the Selectmen go to that meeting if that's the problem?
I believe the Charter requires a joint meeting of the Board of Selectmen and the Board or committee that is involved with the vacancy.
I just assume that most elected boards meet monthly or meet regularly. If they're going to meet, if they have to have a quorum to meet, can't the Selectmen go to that meeting?
They just have to schedule a joint meeting. Anything else to be heard on Article 17? Yes?
Teresa Mays, 1020 Hancock Street. I believe in checks and balances, and taking away the requirement might deplete those checks and balances.
Thank you, Ms. Mays. Okay, sir, state your name and address.
Paul Malika, Presidential Drive. I agree with Mr. Franny. I think if people don't run for elected positions and there are vacancies, each board can only, can only get stuff done if there are enough people to vote for, and have a quorum. So I think this is a, a great way to keep the town moving forward, and it only makes sense to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Malika. There are currently two motions that we have to deal with. One motion is Mr. Franny's main positive motion, which is to approve Article 17 as proposed. But before we can take that vote, we have to look to Mr. Shea's motion, which is to amend the procedure in Article 17 to determine if this, to proceed forward, would we go with Mr. Shea's amendment, which in addition to a town meeting approval, would go to a ballot box election for approval? Or if Mr. Shea's motion does not carry, we'll revert back to the wording in Article 17, which if Article 17 were to pass tonight, would authorize the Selectmen to file special legislation to the State House. Did I summarize that right, and we got that all down? So, our first motion is going to be a motion on, by Mr. Shea, to amend Article 17 to change the process, that if Article 17 were to pass, that instead of filing special legislation with the General Court, that the Selectmen would be required to put this question to a ballot election in the town of Abington, pursuant to whatever applicable state law applies. Is that going to pass muster, Mr. Town Council?
We're not going to do special legislation.
Joe, just to clarify, your motion is not, is to do away with special legislation?
I have a question to ask the town clerk before, before I go to, before I do that. If, would this require a special election? Would my wording as such now require a special election?
I would need the complete wording.
We're going to have...
Could I change my wording to say to go to, to be voted on at the next regularly-scheduled town election? I don't want to spend $5,000 to debate this issue.
You know what? Mr. Shea, with all due respect, I'm getting a little concerned here that if we, if we play around with the wording in the procedure, we may pass something that is improperly or illegally, you know, will not come to fruition, even if that's what the town's intent. I'm going to suggest that we stay with the procedure, and if you're not happy with the procedure that's written in the article, then you would vote against the article. If you're happy with it, you vote for it. That's, the Town Council's advised me, he's not sure that we, he does, he's advising that we cannot change the process as it's printed here. If this fails, the Selectmen can refile this at another town meeting and perhaps use a different process, but I think there's too many unanswered questions about what is the alternative and how should it be properly worded here to make that a legal decision. I'm not making any legal decisions for the town, I'm just the moderator.
I will withdraw my amendment on this, although I still believe that the process should be in the few, including the next article, that any, any amendments to Charter should fall past practice and go to the, and go to the electorate, and the article should be, should have that in there.
Point taken.
I withdraw my mo, my, my, for this article only.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Shea. Mr. DeCarlo, speaking on the procedure.
Henry DeCarlo, 187 Central Street. I'd like to point out to the members here that we have a Charter Review Committee that was just set up, and this would seem to be a perfect thing for them to spend some time on, work on, and come up with a solution for us, and I would suggest that we vote this, pass over this tonight, they can do that.
Thank you very much. So those five people who are appointed, you can start with job one. So, the motion then, before you, is going to be Mr. Franny's motion to approve Article 17 as presented, which would, which would authorize the board to submit this via special legislation to the State House. Are there any questions on the motion that we're about to take? If not, all those in favor of approving Article 17 and authorizing the Selectmen to submit the special legislation, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no.
No.
Article 17 does not fail, does not pass. I'm sure we'll probably see that in another edition in the future. Thank you for your time and your discussion. Article 18, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the General Court for special legislation to create a Department of Public Works in the town of Abington. Chad.
The Finance Committee moves that the town authorize the Board of Selectmen to seek special legislation to amend the Town Charter to create a Department of Public Works, and approve Article 18, all as set forth in the warrant.
Finance Committee recognizes approval of Article 18, all as set forth in the warrant. Is there any discussion regarding Article 18 and the Department of Public Works? Mr. Malika.
Is, is the Water Department included in this?
Town Manager's saying no. Mr. LaFawn?
And, and if not, why?
Okay, now you have a second question. You can answer.
The Water, the Water Department is not currently included in this right now, primarily because it's a joint waterworks with Rockland, and that would be really complicated. On the other hand, there is the provision in this legislation that allows the town, through a public hearing process through the Board of Selectmen and town meeting, to add additional functions at a later date if that become, if those opportunities arise.
Thank you, Mr. LaFawn. Are there any other questions regarding Article 18? Mr. Shea.
I am deeply concerned, because this is a major change. It's a change that has gone, the last time it was proposed in 1999, it was put on a town election. I am in favor of this article. I was in favor of it in 1999, but I am concerned about the way which, which we're having now, and I don't think anybody can say this is not a major change... major change, that it's, it is set up at this point here, if the town meeting approves it, which is about, approximately at the moment, 170 people, we're not, we have, what, 10,000 people who are eligible voters, they're not getting a chance to speak on this. I agree with, I agree with the idea, I have a promise doing it this way, and evidently from what the Town Council is now telling us, we don't have a, you know, we really don't have a choice at this point. I don't wanna see this passed down, but I do have a concern about us doing it.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Mr. LaFawn.
If I could speak to, number one, your concern, Joe, and I appreciate that, however, I would say that in my opinion, this is actually not that substantial a change. This town meeting has effectively, over the last couple of years, consolidated your highway department with your Park and Rec already, and the legislation as it's proposed maintains those elected boards, and those elected boards maintain their policy, and in the case of the Sewer Department, Sewer Commission is their rate-setting capacity also. This is more of an administrative consolidation, and why is this different, perhaps? Because there's a vacancy in a major position, which means it's the time to do something. If we were to wait through the regular charter process, which, you know, I don't disagree, might be preferable to some, you're now talking about a year, year and a half or longer before you could conclude what is really not, at this point, a significant reorganization, and so we're, we're kind of in an interim, perhaps, or a status indefinitely, and I don't think that's healthy for, for any of those organizations.
Thank you, Ms. LaFawn. Mr. Shea, and to all those other town meeting members, Attorney Fair just informed me that he wants to clarify that the proposal to kind of amend the procedure to allow town meeting, approve this, and go to special legislation versus letting town meeting go forward and then go to the ballot election, what he's suggesting is, if you're concerned about the process, that this could be approved with an amended, with an added condition, if you were to so make a motion, that if it was approved tonight, that the authority of the Selectmen to submit the special legislation would be subject to a local ballot election to authorize, to further authorize that special legislation. Or, we can vote it up and down as it's prepared. I don't wanna take away anyone's rights to make amendments, but I want everyone to understand what you're doing.
I would make that amendment, that it be voted, that it be voted at the next regularly-scheduled town election to save the money on spending an election, unless that is improper. I am in favor of this article, and I will vote in favor of it at the ballot.
Attorney Fair.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, through you. This was why I was asking the questions earlier. If we want, if you wanna have the existing process as laid out in the warrant, which would be that there is a vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to submit the special legislation to the General Court, to the Legislature for approval, and make the effective, or the approval, I guess, of the change in the charter, subject to a local acceptance at a, an election of this town, that can be done. It's added as a condition, subsequent, or as part of the conditions to passage of the Act. But the process would be that step A is you approve and authorize the Selectmen, the Selectmen then, and step B, submit it to the General Court. General Court has to approve that, at which point, once it's accepted by the General Court, by the Legislature, then it would be subject to a ballot vote. So, I note that, because it's gonna affect the timing, it wouldn't be necessarily at the next election, it's, it's subsequent to the Legislature's passage of the special Act.
Actually, that would work out well, because the Legislature will not approve it until the fall. That would mean we could put it on the ballot in May, and in the April town election, which is our tradition. Am I correct?
So, just so we're clear, if we approve that with the amendment, we approve it at a town meeting, it would go to the State House? If it's approved by the Legislature, it would then come back for a local ballot for confirmation?
Yes, with that local acceptance amendment.
I would ask that the town meeting pass this amendment, because I think it is important that we preserve the right of the townspeople to vote on charter changes. Thank you, I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Shea, so moved. Anything further to be heard on Article 18? If not, we're gonna take a motion, we're gonna take a vote on Mr. Shea's motion, which I am not gonna, is there a comment? Sure.
Weejo, Franny, 12 Flat Street. Can we reconsider on the article before, then bring that back to the floor?
We can address that after we take this vote, there's article, there's a motion pending for Article 18, so if you'd like to reconsider something, we'll, we can talk after the conclusion of this, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Franny.
Could I, could I raise a point, or is it out of order?
Mr., oh, hold on, let's just have, go ahead, Mrs. Gendrow.
Donna Gendrow, 63 Pearl Street. I just have a question, is there a Recreation Director plans to be hired within this modification?
The legislation doesn't prescribe anything but a director. What the town chooses to do in that organization is ultimately up to the town meeting, and the, keep in mind, it maintains the elected Recreation, Park and Recreation Commission, it maintains the elected Sewer Commission, it doesn't get away from any of that, it just consolidates the administration of those functions, so we're not having multiple functions here. What, however the town chooses to fund any positions within the DPW is, that's an issue for another day, the legislation is not designed to be that specific. That's actually one of the problems right now, if I had to assess with the charter, is that each individual department, in many ways, is set up almost like its own, I hate to use the word kingdom, but, and it doesn't really facilitate some of the, the cost savings and the economies of scale that, that we'd like to see. And, and again, if I could just, not to use you, Donna, here, but, just to get, to talk about Joe's point a little bit, is that the reason for the timing is because, like I said, there's a major vacancy in an executive position, and for us to go about filling that position, and then having to come back in a year and a half, two years after this process plays out, and it's just not a convenient, and it's not a cost-effective way to approach the process, so.
Thank you to both of you. Is there anything else to be heard on Article 18? Twenty words or less?
Mr. Moderator, I encourage this group to vote with the Finance Committee in approving of this article and the Selectmen also. Mr. LaFawn talked about administrative changes, but it's a little bit more than administrative. Instead of each group working in their own silo, now you bring each of those groups, the Park and Rec, granted, it's not really, not funded, but it doesn't have any headcount, the Highway, and the Sewer, to work on the priorities of this town. And all due respect to Mr. Shea, if he would vote for it tonight, why would you wanna wait another year to put this in place without a Director of the DPW? In my mind, it makes a lot of sense to the town, it makes a lot of sense because now this group will work on the priorities of the town instead of each of their individual silos. So, I'd encourage you to follow the recommendation of both the Selectmen and the Finance Committee on this article.
Thank you, Mr. Dion. Mr. Shea, yes, the lady in front of you, speak first.
I'm still Martha Kraft. With regard to Article 18, first of all, is this new, new if it is approved and all of, everything passes? The Department of Public Works is going to cover what departments, it's gonna incorporate what departments into it?
Moderator, I'm sorry, go ahead. Do you have a second question?
I do, but, well, it's not a question, it's a comment, I think, or a clarification.
Let's have Town Manager Rick LaFawn will answer the question.
Currently, it would include the existing Highway, Sewer, Park, Park Rec, Highway divisions of our town.
Thank you.
With, with the opportunity for broader coverage, if it's determined by the town later, without having to go through more legislation.
Okay. And just because I'm trying to clarify what we're voting on now, not Article 18, but the amendment, as I understand him, to interject in this, and I'll read the article as I understand it, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen interject there with the approval of the town electorate at the scheduled election. Did I get that right?
I don't think we're gonna put that language in at the next election, because we have, as I understand it, the ballot election, if that amendment were to pass, would have to occur after the General Court, the State Legislature approves this. Is that right?
As, as I'm understanding it, you want it to go to the election before it goes to the General Court, no? Okay, then I'm not understanding it, I'll let Mr. Shea.
So, the sequence would be town meeting approval, then state legislature approval, then ballot box approval. And if any one of those fails, it doesn't pass, and it doesn't take effect until all three of them are approved. If Joe's amendment passes, otherwise we'll have two steps instead of three steps.
And Mr. Tom Dion said, I agree with the concept, and at the present moment, we in effect have the Highway Superintendent, if I am correct, supervising the Park and Rec Department, and if that's been the case. There is nothing to prevent that happening, and it was a new appointment. My concern is not with that, I think that makes sense. I have a concern with us bypassing the process that we have used in this town for many years on the charter, and taking away the right of the public to vote on it. I think that is a major change. If somebody thinks that's a good idea, then I suggest we go to Charter Bylaw Revision Committee and ask them what they think on it, and have them come back for a vote for the town. I think that's, to allow, to bypass the electorate, to me, is an error.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Quick comment from Ms. Jansen.
Hi, very quickly, Maureen Jansen, 201 Patricia Drive. All I wanna say about this is that anyone who goes, anyone in town who sees how, how the Park and Rec, how Highway, and how Sewer work together currently, this is already happening. I'm just gonna tell you with the DPW, if something happens on the road with Sewer, you're gonna have Highway there, if you go out and see what, who's mowing the grass on the fields, it's Highway and it's Park and Rec together. I understand, Mr. Shea, indicating, you know, that there's, there are two ways of doing this. Fact of the matter is, we've made charter changes at town meeting multiple times before, so that's all I wanna say, and I just wanna encourage you to vote in favor of the, the motion that the Finance Committee has on file. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion by the Finance Committee to approve Article 18 as presented would require a majority vote, but before we go there, we have to decide Mr. Shea's amendment, which would be to add the required condition of a local ballot acceptance, and I would suggest to be at a ballot election to be scheduled by the Board of Selectmen. Would that work, Attorney Fair? This is like watching sausage being made.
Mr. Moderator, I think what we could do is if the, the motion as printed in the handout, if we were to add to the end, and to make the special legislation subject to approval by the voters of the town in an election, I think that would satisfy.
Okay, Joe? All right, so to make, you heard it. That's Joe's motion, to add that language, that third step. If you vote yes, you will be approving Joe's motion to add the third step. If you vote no, we will then look to the article, essentially the two-step article for approval, and a second vote. All those in favor of approving Mr. Shea's motion, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. The amendment does not carry. Now, we'll look to the Finance Committee's recommendation to approve Article 18 as presented, which would authorize the Selectmen to file the special legislation. All those in favor of approving Article 18 in the Finance Committee's motion, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Article 19, to see if the town will vote to amend the general bylaws to adopt a new bylaw concerning the licensing of pawnbrokers, which will require a majority vote. Mr. Lovett.
The Finance Committee moves that the town vote to amend the general bylaws to adopt a pawnbroker bylaw, and approve Article 19, all as set forth in the warrant.
Is there anything to be heard on Article 19 regarding pawnbrokers? Finance Committee, wanna repeat your recommendation?
Sure.
The Finance Committee moves that the town vote to amend the general bylaws to adopt a pawnbroker bylaw, and approve Article 19, all as set forth in the warrant.
Anything to be heard in the Finance Committee's motion? Yes, sir? We already have a pawnbroker in town, or a pawnbroker bylaw? Okay, so we have a pawnbroker, now we're gonna ask for a pawnbroker bylaw? If you wanna continue this discussion, you're gonna have to go to the microphone. Okay, so the, the motion's to adopt the new bylaw concerning the licensing of pawnbrokers, there being no hands? All those in favor of approving Article 19 as motioned by the Finance Committee, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Article-